It was all that person just had like the screen. Yeah, back there, easy double check.
Uh, we're just a little bit late. We're waiting for a quorum and we'll start as soon as we get one. Okay.
We can schedule a special meeting.
Okay, it's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're offering this as a final decision here. Yeah, so that's right.
We, we did find that we do have a quorum coming. A gentleman will be here shortly and then we'll start the meeting. Thank you for your patience.
Oh, yeah.
Sam, did either of you check the pilot access to see if it's working through us?
Yeah, it works. Talked Matt since the.
So it's I T said it's not working. It's now working. So I'm thinking we're applying on Z S R's fault.
Again, folks, if you didn't hear me prior to that, we're just waiting for a quorum and the gentleman that's we're waiting for should be here shortly. Again, thank you for your patience.
Great.
All right, we have our quorum. I call to order this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for Thursday, May eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, we're starting at seven twenty-four for the record. Uh, let's start off with a roll call, please.
Anderson, Grimes.
Here.
Haug.
Here.
Haynes.
Here.
Young.
Here.
Bill.
Here. Have a quorum. Thank you.
Welcome, everybody, to this meeting. We have the council members, commissioners, we have the people who are also here, but also have YouTube.
Uh, so if you didn't hear me, uh, just I'm welcoming everybody. Uh, thank you, uh, the audience, the commissioners and the YouTube audience. So, uh, the next, uh, uh, set of orders is the minutes of the April twenty tenth, uh, two thousand twenty-five Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Do we have any acceptances or variations or corrections? Okay, none being made. Uh, do I have a motion to accept this?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Commissioner Hague announced it and Monsieur Haynes, uh, seconded. Okay, um, let's have a roll call.
Young.
Yes.
Uh, Haynes.
Yes.
Grimes.
Yes.
Haug.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes. Okay, that's passed. The next one, motion is audience time. Now, this is where anybody in the audience has the ability to bring up things that are pertinent to the agenda of what we've got. We've got four different items to look at, or if you have other concerns, this is your time to bring them in. So do I have anybody that wants to bring up anything in from the audience? Sir, if you could, could you, uh, yeah, sign in? And is this pertinent to the, uh, which, which case is this, or is it, uh?
For the, uh, the, um, oh, the fourteen twenty-eight West Glen four or, um, I believe it's a banquet hall.
Oh, okay. Um, let me swear you in, please, if you serve. And tell us your concern, sir.
Uh, my concern is, oh.
Yeah, I guess if it's pertinent to the case, we'll just do it on your agenda time when we do that.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, the first, first, uh, point of business is going to be zoning calendar V one twenty-five, the voc- uh, vacation of the portion of the right-of-way adjacent to the north property line of twelve oh six Yeoman Street. Uh, who's going to present that from the city?
Good evening, commissioners. That'll be me, Tyler, planner here. Uh, as you stated, I will be here to present zoning calendar V one twenty-five, also known as a vacation of a portion of the right-of-way adjacent to twelve oh six Yeoman Street. The homeowner is the applicant, Linda Dorsey, and it is in the fifth ward. A little bit of background on the property. The homeowner has used this right-of-way as their driveway for over forty years. The garage that's on the site was actually built in nineteen eighty-two. The applicant constructed a fence with a gate uh, within that right-of-way without permits in twenty twenty-four, and it was flagged by code compliance. That's how we got to this, uh, meeting, and there is also a four-foot easement for utilities on the most northern part of the right-of-way. Um, so here's a aerial of the property in question. Oh, yeah, sorry, uh, the back TV isn't working, uh, technical difficulties, but um, this is the property in question. As you can see, twelve oh six Yeoman Street, the out, the property lines are outlined in purple. Uh, as you can see, her driveway has no lines around it, which means it is a right-of-way, so technically it is owned by the city. Uh, but you can see the garage and her driveway are in that right-of-way. Um, and then here's a street view. Oh, here's the plat of vacation, which shows the area to be vacated is directly adjacent to her property. The property lines match up on the east and west sides. Um, so it basically runs the length of her property. Uh, here's a street view, for example. Here is the driveway in question. As you can see, if you were just driving by, it looks like a normal driveway. However, it is in the right-of-way of the city. And here is the gate that was put in with the timestamp. As you can see, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Um, it was put in, code flagged it as illegal. She came to us to get a permit, and that is when we noticed that it was in the right-of-way, so technically we So technically, we couldn't issue the permit since it was on city property. So the process to get that permit approved would be to vacate that area of her property so she can have that fence there. So that's why we are here today for this vacation. So here's a breakdown of the cost that we did with every vacation. We take an average of the properties that are immediately adjacent to this. So if we go back, you can see there's about three properties to the north, as well as this property that's touching it to the south. So we took the average of those and just the assessed value, so not the market value. Sorry, this timed out. Yeah, so while this comes back, I'll just talk about the cost. So we did that formula to come up with the cost, and the recommended price for this vacation is about three thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars. Yeah, so here's a breakdown. The average cost per square foot was a dollar and forty-six, and we just multiplied that by the square footage of the vacation, which is about twenty-two hundred square feet, and that is how we got the three thousand two hundred and twenty-three and sixty-eight cents. And again, this is the formula for every vacation. And then, yes, that concludes the presentation. Sorry, the technology is a little laggy today, but...
Tyler, one question.
Yes.
I think we spoke before about this is an estimation of the price and the final...
Yeah, so the final determining price is set by city council. We just put that in the presentation for you guys to be aware, but yeah, that really doesn't have an effect here. It's more so for city council as they set and determine the final price.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
Tyler, is, is there concrete over the utility easement right now?
Yes, and the process we went through, we talked to all the utility companies, Northshore Gas, ComEd, and there's a third one, it slipped in my mind, AT&amp;T, and they all signed off on it. There are a few overhead cables, but this property has been this way for over forty years. They don't see a problem vacating this right-of-way because they do have that utility easement. If any problems, they have access to that overhead cable.
And then this right-of-way is property of the city, and the purpose of it was originally for what? To put in an alley, to have another street go through?
Yeah, if you guys remember, there was a similar property that came to us, I think, last year. It was actually the property across the street. There is the right-of-way that goes through four or five blocks. They're all within, I think their alley is within two or three blocks, and then there's two blocks that the alley or the right-of-way goes to people's property. So this is just one of those unique cases.
And so there is no, like, higher authority other than us and the city council in terms of if there's any potential use for this property in the future for the city? It's up to us and the city council to make that decision?
Correct, yeah. This is the proper avenue to vacate that land. If we own the land, if it was a separate parcel and we owned it, we can do a quitclaim deed and just transfer the property to them, but since it is a right-of-way, we have to go through this vacation process.
And so in nineteen eighty-two, when this happened, we have no idea how it happened or what the deal was there?
As you may can tell, I was not around back then. I have...
What?
None of us have any idea of how that...
I was.
Of how that garage was built. And yes, the homeowner was in that property back then. She's owned the property.
Okay.
Commissioners, anybody else? Does, is the presenter here, who's going to address their point of view? Are they here? I'd like to swear you in. Yes, could you write, yeah, write in, and then please just state your name, and I'll swear you in.
Good evening. My name is Linda Dorsey, and I am the property owner of that twelve oh six Yeoman.
Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear to affirm the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, um, my parents had this home since I was born and been there for a long time. And in nineteen eighty-two, my father had a garage built on that alley, as we call it, and the city of Waukegan gave him a permit, permit number one zero zero five. I came to the city to find that permit, and no one could find that document. So I'm just concerned as far as, I don't know why I'm going through all this, but I will do what I need to do to obtain the property, but it's like if it was a permit given, they should have noticed it at that point in time, I would think.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? So, and concerning this, this particular piece of business here for this vacation of property, we are going to, again, our recommendations will be sent to the city for final approval, so this is just our recommendation for this. So do I have a commissioner for acceptance or denial of this?
I recommend approval for zoning calendar V one twenty-five, vacation of the portion of the right-of-way adjacent to the north property line of twelve oh six Yeoman Street.
Do I have a second on that?
You have a second there?
So I have Commissioner Hague presenting it, and Commissioner Young as a second. Let's have a roll call vote on that. Thank you.
Young.
Yes.
Haynes.
Yes.
Grimes.
Yes.
Haug.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes, motion passes. So your next meeting will be on, I believe, what did I put it here, May, June, June second, around five o'clock, and it'll be in this room right here. So we'll, we'll let you know exactly when it is and stuff like that. Good luck. Thank you. Okay, our second. Paperwork here. Okay. Item B, zoning calendar twenty-seven eighty-two, conditional use permit for the operation of a banquet hall at fourteen twenty-eight West Glen Flora Avenue. City?
Hello, commissioners. Hello, commissioners. My name is Sam Lapine, associate planner or assistant planner, and I'll be the presenter from the city. Zoning calendar two seven eight-two, fourteen twenty-eight West Glen Flora. The applicant is Club Apaseo El Alto, and jointly, the owner of this is Armando Peña, who is here today. The site is located in Ward Five. Mr. Peña has gone to the city in the past for another CUP, so this is his second CUP. For this specific conditional use permit, he's requesting that the site be used as a banquet hall within a B-two zoning district. Currently, it's surrounded by single-unit residential and general residential, and the site has always been used for commercial, and most recently, it was an office supply store. Here's the zoning map of the city. As you can see, it's kind of a business island in the center of residential. Here are, is the site before and after. Mr. Peña purchased it and renovated it. Conditions for his first CUP involved improving the parking situation, which I think you can see pretty clearly going from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-four. No curb in twenty eighteen, no real striping, whereas in twenty twenty-four, the curb had been replaced, it's repaved, restriped, and there's some foliage there. This is the interior site plan that Mr. Peña provided for the proposed banquet hall. It is utilizing around half the, half the building for space, and as you can maybe see, it's a bit small. There's a dance floor up in front, that'll take up most of the space, a stage, some areas for seating in the back right, a bar for serving food and drink. Restroom facilities are in the center, to the left of the main offices, and there's also a space for dressing room and food prep. This image was taken from Mr. Peña's last CUP. Part of the concern was that the site doesn't have enough parking, and this was an image describing the auxiliary lot that was proposed for use at the site. Currently, Club Apaseo El Alto does have a parking agreement with that property for use of that lot, and there's a condition that I've included in the use permit that requires a parking agreement be updated as needed and provided to the city. Couple more details. The previous zoning number was twenty-seven forty-one. This is a conditional use in the B-two community shopping district, some inclusions that I already mentioned. And as far as our comprehensive land use plan goes, it is in line with the character of a commercial area as it's described there, and it is an allowed conditional use, as I said. Our options for denying is, Club Apaseo El Alto can continue operating as is, but will not be allowed to operate as a banquet hall. If approved, Club Apaseo El Alto will be allowed to operate as a banquet hall and will be beholden to these conditions as well as the conditions previously outlined in their last zoning calendar item. When I wrote this, or when I generated this, we had only received a phone call saying, with objection to the project, but in that time, I've received a written objection, and if you'd like me to read that into the record now, I can. So this objection letter is from Joan S. Welton, on behalf of Raymond F. Goodbody. "I represent the property at fifteen oh four West Glen Flora Avenue, which borders the Club Apaseo El Alto on the west. I do have concerns on the proposed banquet hall. Building capacity proposed is two hundred persons. This seems high for area set aside for banquet area. Hours of operation is proposed as nine AM to midnight, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Project details indicate a bar area for beverage service and food availability. The existing floor plan does not show sinks slash water for food handlers to clean hands for sanitary food slash drink service. If drinks include beer, wine, or mixed drinks, proper licenses will be needed, and food handler certified persons will be needed for food services. Stated in application is multiple bathrooms are available. The existing floor plan shows a small restroom area, clearly not sufficient for two hundred persons. Application states area will be kept clear of trash. The area of fifteen oh four West Glen Flora between the club's parking lot and our driveway is often littered. Beer packaging, food packaging, cans often need to be picked up. Not observed being put where, put there, but it does end up there. Parking. The application indicates twenty-seven parking spaces to be provided. This is truly inadequate for two hundred people, no matter how you do the math. I've included information on parking situations I have observed in the last few weeks. Sheet A, and for reference, these are on board docs, shows the front of the building with five spaces and driveway to the rear parking lot. Sheets B, C, and D show parking observed not in designated spots. Excess parking seems to go on the street on Yeoman Street. I believe parking is available on Glen Flora, but it is, it is a busy street, a direct route to the hospital, and in winter, a snow-restricted parking area. Overcrowding and safety. The existing floor plan shows two exits with only one off the proposed banquet area. This would cause crowding at the door and the need to clear the area. Nowhere does it mention police presence during events. Police and fire departments need clear access to area if needed. If one hundred to two hundred persons are exiting at once, it would delay emergency access into the building. Smoking area? No mention of designated smoking area and trash cans for ash bots. Traffic on Glen Flora Avenue. The club has established an appointment system for food distributions, so there is no huge line of cars entering the property. However, there has been some traffic lineup from cars turning left into the property. These food distributions seem to go smoother than some others I have seen. I have observed a truck belonging to Mr. Peña's painting company parked in the rear lot multiple times. That is all."
Thank you, Sam. Commissioners, do I have any questions for city?
I've also included, sorry, I've also included some of the less generalized conditions we've included, and these are in addition to what was established in zoning calendar twenty-seven forty-one.
So both would apply?
Yes, they would both apply.
Okay.
Should this be approved. There are things that are relevant to noise pollution. There is a reiteration of the parking agreement being necessary. Again, reiteration that, you know, site landscaping must be maintained as replaced as needed, which I believe has been done adequately so far. And finally, no more storage of vehicles, trucks, or materials unrelated to the business located at the property, among other items on the document itself. And these are findings of fact.
Commissioner Hague.
Yeah, in terms of the parking, correction if I'm wrong, that's way below what's required by that zoning, is that not correct?
So currently, there is no parking requirement, but in the previous ordinance, it would have been sixty-seven spots required.
And they currently have twenty-seven.
Including the agreement he has with the neighboring property, it's twenty-seven.
And there's really no place to, I mean, it's right across, it's right on Glen Flora Road. There's really no street parking there at all. I mean, it's a pretty busy street.
Yes, yes, it is.
So just to, for clarity, I want to make sure you heard, so with the parking, the additional parking agreement that we have, if I understand, the point you made just now is that that, even with the additional parking agreement, they're still at the twenty-some spaces?
A total of twenty-seven with the agreement.
With the agreement. And if I heard you right before, the agreement is one of the elements that we don't yet have? We say we have an agreement, but we don't have the agreement?
We have a pre-existing agreement from his last CUP.
Got it, thank you.
And we're asking him to renew that as needed.
Cool, thanks.
Regarding the capacity listed as two hundred and the size of the property, the space, is there a controlling body within the city that allows that capacity? Has that been evaluated or approved?
Our largest concern is fire, and I, I spoke with Mr. Zupac, and he stated that the capacity of the building is a little bit above three hundred.
The whole building or the portion that they intend to use for the banquet hall?
That's a good distinction. The whole building is three hundred. I did not have an estimate for just that portion.
It seems as though the banquet hall is about a third of the building, and that the warehouse and the storage room and all that is the larger portion. So that would be something we would need to understand better, I think.
I understand.
Or put additional conditions on, because I don't think that, based on 300 being the entire building, and this, you know, I don't know, maybe there's a solution that someone is going to present, I don't know.
Any other questions? Who is going to present this case? And if you could, whoever's going to be asking for the variance, if you could also have other people that might be supporting it, or not supporting it, if you could come up, I'll swear you out at one time.
My name is Armando Pena, I'm the president of the organization, son of property.
Mr. Penna, I would like to swear you in, could you raise your right arm, our hand? Do you swear to affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I swear it's true.
Thank you, sir. Present your case, sir.
Well, my situation about the, to apply for the banquet hall is because I'm in bad situation with the organization. We lost a ground, and we put a stay, so I'm very bad on the money. So that's why I are looking to be, do like fundraising events, you know, I did one already the last weekend, on the 26th, for raising funds. And we applied for the liquor, you know, the liquor license, and then for the food, you know, serving the food too with the license and everything, but it's, and also that because I know it's a lot of needs from people, they need to do, you know, they see the place and they see, well, it's a great place to see if we can do, you know, some festivals and some even the celebrations for them, for their birthday. Even I was thinking to do my birthday too, but I, I know it's, this situation is a little hard for, for me to asking you guys to be, to have this permit for me, because yeah, it's, it's one way that I can earn money and raising funds for the, all the expenses that I had to do. And even for the people guys, they didn't do, they were reading for the winter, and they sent me a bill for $4,000. And definitely, definitely I did this because it's totally for my situation, it's very disrespectful to do fundraisings and the, you know, the application you approve, so I can do fundraisings and, yeah, people, and maybe, yeah, it's a little higher in the number and the, and the people, and we can go lower, it's okay, but I don't know what to say more, because that's my situation right now, and I'm, I'm playing, paid to, to have this for, it's only for my, to cover all these kind of bills. And I, well, that's what I have to, asking the, the plans on to the, for this permission, it is possible, it is not, so I can work it out, we can work it out. And we have a ground for fixing the, fixing the building, put new kitchen, put new everything, a new roof, but this ground is still in hole, because my auditor, she's still, finished the auditor, and the Gara portal stopped my, you know, kid for the, for this ground, for the remodeling. That one is still on, but I, I know I had to do things, and like, like this first time that I come in, and I come from many years ago, and I'm, you know, since I opened the office to help in the community, since 2013, when I, I get the organization on, and it's a Spanish organization, but I, I do the best as possible to do with my licenses, everything the, the right way, not to disturb nobody, not to making any trouble to nobody, so just to do for the good for the community and for the people. And you can see you guys, they know, on the food pantry, we service every weekend at 300 or 400 families, and I did, like I said, I swear to the, to you guys in here, there will be no trouble on the traffic, things like that, but yeah. And we working to, the best as possible to, to do everything right, legally, nothing to do, you know, things wrong, but I know, I got a lot of activities, I'm helping a lot and things, but yeah, this is the way I decide to ask for this permission, this license.
Mr. Penna, I know in the last time we met, we had conditions on that variance, in this one, there's additional variances, or conditions, I should say, to the variance. Have you read them and understand them, you're agreeable with those?
Yeah, I see.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Penna?
I guess I just want to understand, you're stating, and please know, we do know that you are an asset in many ways to the community with your food pantry, and the fact that you've abided, it seems like, by all of the conditions that were put on last time, and that is very much appreciated and recognized. You say that you're willing to reduce the number of occupants based on the 200 that you've applied for? Okay. And do you have any answers regarding the bathroom situation that the, that the resident raised, the objection letter? Are there only two bathrooms in the building?
Yeah, it's only two bathrooms.
Okay. For 200 people, that's not a lot of bathrooms, speaking as a woman. So I don't know, I don't know how that gets revised in terms of if this was going, I'm asking staff, if, if moving forward, and if there was a decision to say that we would be willing to consider things with modifications, does that come back to staff, and then you guys work with him, if ultimately that's the decision that we as a commission make tonight? How does that actually work if there's going to be any modifications in the plan?
We would continue working with Mr. Pena on a revised site plan.
That's all the questions I have for now. I reserve the right to ask more.
Okay, so what we do right now is we have to have a, a motion to accept... Excuse me, forgot about the audience. Anybody that wants to address this, in confirmation of it, or denial of it, or concerns, could you please come up? I'd like to swear you in. Could you please write your name on the roster there, and roster, I should say, and...
We're ready to be sworn in.
Shall I sign, should we get everybody to sign in first?
You can swear them in first.
Okay. Could everybody come up, and I'd like to swear you in?
He's going to swear everybody in at one time.
Yeah.
Do they need to sign in first? Okay.
But let's go ahead, and everybody, please state your name first, everybody?
Joan S. Welton.
Michael Smith.
Gloria Gomez.
Karina Diaz.
Penanca Haribol.
Angelica La Hues.
Okay, could you all please raise your right hand? Do you affirm to, that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Joan Welton, and I'm representing the property directly west of the club, which is 1504 West Glen Flora. In the recommendations by the planning and zoning commission staff, they listed the two main issues as traffic congestion and noise pollution. I feel that safety and security and health concerns of the persons on the property are more, almost more important than that. There's limited entrances and exits. The proposed area that's shown on the site plan shows the banquet area in the front of the building, and there's only one entrance available directly into that room. The other entrance/ exits would have to go through the building to the back and out a loading dock area. You addressed the limited washroom facilities. As far as the areas that were for food handling and drink and beverage service, I didn't see any sinks or anything like that for hand washing for the handlers, or for wiping down the area, you know, with a sanitary solution as needed. A smoking area, I know smoking is not allowed in a public building, however, people will be going outside to smoke, and the cigarette butts and ashes end up someplace. And I think that should be addressed, whether they put a, you know, ashtray, you know, in a designated area, or just tell them there's no smoking, no smoking on the property, but be considerate of the neighbors. Any food handler, bartender, beverage person, they need training, especially if alcohol's going to be served, because you need to know when that person is close to that over-served area. And if they're handling food, you have to have certified food handlers on site. It's another thing, if you're bringing the food in and you're just, you know, passing it out, or whatever. But I think most of my concerns were, oh, the parking. In my letter, I indicate, I did a few, you know, maps of sorts of parking I've already observed. And it has been, they have a handicapped area, and the spot next to it is striped, is, you know, is a no parking area. I've observed cars parked in there. I've observed cars parked too deep in a front parking lot, so they were, you know, back to back, with the third one across the back of another two cars. Also, on the far west side, there's a small area that's not a real parking spot, I've observed a car parked in there, and that blocks the stand, I believe it's called a standpipe, but the water access for the fire department. Also, the overflow parking seems to be parking on Yeoman Street. One evening, about 10:45 at night, I noticed all kinds of cars parked on both sides of Yeoman Street, which is fine, because it's not to that even odd parking time yet, but it was tight in there. And if, you know, multiple fire trucks and police happen to need to go down there, it'd be difficult. So like I said, my concern is for the safety of the customers, and the fire and the police that have to go there. And also, with that many people, would he be required to have a police or security on site? So thank you for your time.
I'd like to ask you a question.
Thank you.
Ms. Welton, can I ask you a question, please?
Yes, please.
I do recall that you were here when Mr. Pena came for the food pantry, and I would like to ask you a question regarding the decisions that we made as a commission then, and he moved forward with his food pantry. It appears from what we, what I can see, that he's been a good citizen in that respect. And your statement talks about the fact that it seems that it's better. I'd like to just have a little bit of your feeling about how that's gone.
They've set up a timing period that, you know, apparently people sign up for a specific time to show up. They pull in to the east, there's a driveway which goes to the back lot. So they drive down that back driveway into the back lot, I believe they're screened back there, they come back down and get their food in front of the building, and then go, you know, out the west entranceway. It seems to go smooth. Occasionally, it will back up on Glen Flora, a couple of cars, like maybe three, but the one that gets me is people coming, driving east on Glen Flora, trying to turn left into the thing, and it's, you know, it's nobody's fault, it's just, and it kind of ties up traffic there.
But overall, do you think that, I mean, the concerns we had were that there was going to be lines of cars all the way down Glen Flora? You think that they have addressed that fairly well, that particular aspect of it?
It seems to go smooth, with the, you know, timing issue.
And the, the condition of the front of the property and the cleanliness, I know that was a concern of yours, has that been fairly well maintained?
Well, like I said in my letter, the property that, or the portion of the property, which is between 1504's driveway and the club, I seem to get a lot of trash in there, and I cannot blame that on any one person, but, or place, but it seems, I don't know if it's weird, odd, coincidental, that the trash ends up in that section, you know, and it's an assortment of things, food wrappers, beer containers, cans.
Right, and you're right, that that's hard to pinpoint on any one particular thing, because anybody who lives on a busy street, that, that can happen. But overall, I think, I would just, I guess I'm asking if you think he has a passing grade overall for how things have gone from your perspective, because you were one of the most outspoken people regarding that situation, and I'm just trying to determine if you're okay with how it's gone so far.
Yeah, my concern is that eventually, I can't, I can't pinpoint a date, but like within the next five to 10 years, for sure, 1504 will be going up for sale. And my concern is the effect on that property.
Okay. Your point is well taken, thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, I would also just like to indicate that your concerns about the health and the food handling and food custody and stuff like that, I believe that they would need a license from the Lake County Health Department, those, that's the body that actually controls that. But you're right, it does need to be looked into, but...
As a question, doesn't the city follow up, that they have the proper licensing and stuff before they have events?
City?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, could you repeat the question?
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Michael Smith, and I reside at 1515 West Glen Flora, which is two houses down across the street from Ms. Welton's property that she was talking about. And my concern for that type of business in that neighborhood is that it's a little bit too big. One, the parking, 27 spots, it means everybody's going to have to park on Glen Flora, and then from December 1st to April 1st, they're going to park on Butrick, Yeoman, New York, maybe even Pine, Side Street. Foot traffic, for when they park on those streets and in the neighborhoods, could cause some problems. And I'm not saying that anything, hoping, God forbid, but you have that traffic, and then you have the stuff that could be laid in people's yards. And people that are out there in confrontations, because of, you know, who knows whether they had too much alcohol in there or not. That's one, that's one of my main concerns. Plus, it's hard to get out now, with no cars parked on that street, now I have parks, cars lined up and down for three blocks, because of, you know, if it's 100 or 200 people, and 50 cars, 100 cars, it's a lot of cars. And I'm, that's my childhood home I live in, and I remember the days of the National Guard being in the armory, and the cars parked up in there, and how to get out of there. So that's, that's a real big concern, and the safety of anything going up and down the street, with the stoplight and the head start school down there, it gets backed up, and just difficult. And like I said, the foot traffic in the neighborhood, potential trash in the neighborhood, it just, to me, is just not conducive for that type of neighborhood, for that size of business. And that's, those are my concerns.
Questions, commissioners? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
State your name.
Hi, my name is Gloria Gomez. I've been knowing Mr. Armando Pena for many years, so he's been, done a wonderful job helping the community in general. Just want to make some points about... Just want to make some points about the parking space, just, just what I have seen, because I've been voluntarily, you know, like checking in the cars and all that. So Armando has people who, once the car goes in, you know, to, to pick out their groceries, you know, he has someone there to guide, you know? So people don't park there. So people just go around, and they go and pick up their food and then just leave. People don't stay there, you know, for a long time. So that's for the parking space. So the other thing about the food, the food permit, Mr. Peña, I don't think he will be selling food there, you know? He will be just renting the hall. So the people who is actually bringing the food, it will be the people who's been, who's been, who's going to be renting the hall. Because if you're handling food or you're going to be selling food, you will have to have, you know, a food permit from Lake County Health Department, because I just do get a permit when my mom just to sell things. So that's when you get a permit. So I just want to say that Armando's been doing a great job, you know, helping the community in general, and he does a lot for the community. So I just want to make those points. And as far as the hand sanitizer and all that, he can have some of those portable hand sanitizers, you know, and he does have at the, at the, at the office, he does have that. So I just want to point that out. But I just want to say that he's been helping the community a lot, and, you know, it's not just the Hispanic, he opens the doors to anybody. So just want to say that.
Thank you for being part of the process. Next?
Hi, my name is Karina Diaz. I'm also a volunteer of the, of the organization, and it's a very important thing that he does in the community. He impacts disabled people, because he used to, when you are near a need and you need a wheelchair or you need a walker, he helps everybody. Like my, my, my volunteer coworker said that he doesn't, it's not open only to Hispanic, it's only to everybody that he can help. And I know that there's some concerns with the parking, with the safety, with the food and all that, but I think those things we can work out together as a community. With the commission, with you guys, as a, you guys, everybody, we can all work together, because in the past, you said some recommendations, and he has followed them, like you guys told. So I think those, those things can be handled, can be worked, and it's a very, it's very impacting what he does as an organization for the people. And about the, the houses around, maybe at the beginning, we also can work something with the police department, we can go, we can, private security, we can work something together. And also, if we get grants, he can do the remodeling that does, or does the, the, for the bathroom, extension of the bathrooms, more space for, he needs for the bucket and all that. And like he said, it's going to be renting, you know, some income can get, we can get more resources to the community. That's the most important thing that we want to keep doing, to not, not let the community out, keep them around. And about the houses, so I think that when we have business around our houses, our house's values is more higher, because we have, you know, places that we can, that's my opinion in my, in my, I'm going to say. That's all, thank you for the attention.
Thank you for being part of the process.
I'm going to translate for them.
Okay.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Esperanza Garibay.
Hi, good afternoon, my name is Esperanza.
Yo vengo a apoyar a Armando.
I come to support Armando.
Él ha ayudado mucho.
He has helped a lot.
Incluso yo he ido a...
Including myself?
A ayudar.
I have been like a volunteer?
He's been a voluntario.
Volunteer?
Pues, lo que yo, lo que yo sé y he visto es que tiene...
What I have been seeing and I have been...
Tiene todo bajo control.
That he has everything under control. Sí, de, de todo, cómo funciona, qué te gusta.
Está todo bien.
Everything is okay.
Yo he visto, yo he ayudado.
I have been seeing and I have been helping. Thank you.
Gracias.
Yes, please sign in. Okay. Could you state your name?
Argelia Galeano.
My name is Argelia Galeano.
Pues vengo a apoyar al señor Armando.
I come here to support Mr. Armando.
Pues él es, yo voy a la, ¿cómo le dice? A la comida, porque pues él apoya mucho a la comunidad.
I come to get my dispense, because he supports a lot of the community.
Sí, eso pues es muy bueno, porque pues...
This is very good and helps.
Él está ayudando para nuestros alimentos.
He's helping the community with our food dispense.
Y pues aquí estamos apoyándolo a él.
And here we are to support him.
Sí, para que pues primeramente Dios todo le salga bien.
First and everything that God in, in front, can everything keep going.
Okay.
Mi nombre es Angélica Laguna.
My name is Angélica Laguna.
Yo soy voluntaria de hace dos años.
I'm a, I'm a volunteer since two years ago.
El señor Armando ayuda muchísimo a la comunidad.
Mr. Armando helps a lot of the community?
Cada ocho días hacemos más de 100 dispensas para la comunidad.
Every eight days, we do more than 100 dispenses for the community?
El estacionamiento está todo, nunca, bueno, hasta el momento nunca he visto que se haga mucho.
Right now, at the moment, I have been seeing at the parking lot, and it doesn't get so crowded, because everything is organized. Sí, voluntarios.
Voluntarios que ayudamos, vamos guiando conforme van llegando, pasando, dan vuelta, y rápido salen, todo está...
I'm sorry. We got a coordination that with somebody, when the car comes, we have another volunteer that is organizing, getting the number of the people and help get, upload the, the box of food and everything.
Y pues el señor Armando aparte de comida...
Addition from the food, Mr. Armando.
Hay varios... Ayuda más a diferentes cosas, pero...
He also helps around programs for the community.
Es mucha ayuda para la comunidad.
He's a lot of help for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, this is another case.
I live in the same neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, you're right. I'm going to ask you to state your name, and I'm going to swear you in again on this case.
Linda Dorsey.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
I do live in that area of the 1428 West Glen Flora, and my property is at 1206 Yeoman. And the reason why my son put a gate up, which caused problems for me, is because there's people walking up and down the street. He has dogs. We've had many calls that we need to keep the dogs in the yard. So it has been a problem with the parking cars and people walking up and down the street. Like you said, the cars parked on both sides, it's kind of difficult to get out of your driveway or even to come down the street. So it's got a little bit of issues that could be going on in that area with the parking and people. That's my concern with what's going on, because I do have a home there, and there's people walking up and down the street. There's things being thrown in the yard, liquor bottles, what have you. I'm not sure who did it, but it wasn't like that before when I was a young lady. And I've lived in that home for many, many years. I was born there, 1959, till my age, but that's how long I've been there. So it's still changing from the time I was born and now, which life changes. But that's something I think should be in that community. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Pennett, do you have any response to any of the dialogue at all?
Well, I know the, about the, the main concern is the traffic, all the stock and things like that. But I know in this, like I said, I had to do everything very in the right way and legally. So that's why I, you know, we, and this, I talked to a security company, they work for the, you know, for security, they help me, you know, they got charged, they're going to charge me for, do the security for the parking lot and for everything. And that's why everything is, you know, what I got to do is have to be done with that, all the right things, so we don't have to make it, you know, like the sensational to be, everything is going to be like an accident, and people killing people, people destroying the stuff, people throwing garbage everywhere. We, I responsible to clean, I clean the most time. I know some garbage go to the neighbor, but sometimes because the wind, the winds pull a lot of garbage even to my, to my place. I don't have, I don't own any trees at my place, but I got a lot of leaves, I like every, everywhere garbage. Even one of the trees for my neighbor fall to my, one of my truck, and I, I didn't want it to complain, because I, I wanted to be the good neighbor. And even I pay for two feet in my truck, but I can, I can bring those pictures and I can show things there. I don't want to be a bad neighbor, I want to be a good neighbor to everybody, and also I know. I had to talk to whoever who's going to rent a place and we're going to, I had to put all those legally pointed to the contract and what I got to have to do, because everything has to be, you know, the right, the insurance, the cleaning, all that stuff is got to be taken care, because I know, I know have to be responsible for, for the good way and the look for the community and the, and the organization. I don't want it to be, you know, even, I'm proud of myself, because I'm the, you know, we are 100% Latin in the community and this organization. I'm hard to speak English in one way, but like I said, I prove it to you with all, and the traffic for the, for the pantry, I control it, and I say, I put it, you know, people in certain times, and they coming in and they go out. They coming in, they go out. Sometimes a little bit, there's a traffic in the streets, I thought they had to stop a little bit because there's a traffic, yeah, but they get in and they get out very carefully. No issues so far. I know from my last festival that I did last weekend, somebody called to the police, the police went there, and they, they asking for, hey, people say, it was here, it's a lot of people drunk, a lot of people is making a lot of noise and everything, and they went in there. They saw nothing, even they wanted to dance in there. And also, I showed them my liquor license, certificate, everything, and also the food certification for selling the food. Everything is applying, nothing do the wrong way. And there's, I know, I know there's that concern for traffic, but I swear I had to, I do for everything to do the right thing. I don't want to be a bad neighbor. I don't want to be there, because it's a good cause that I founded since 2013 for the good community, and, and we making more programs, we making more, you know, more activities. But yeah, everything has to be notable to you guys, to tell you, it's this, it's going to be this and that, but nothing to do the bad way.
Mr. Pennett, I would just like to say your outreach is very commendable in what you do do. It sounds like the audience mirrors that image, and you do a very nice thing for Waukegan as far as the food resources and stuff like that, so we do thank you for that. Now, I have a question for city and council. If there, should we vote on this right now to accept or deny? And then if we did change the occupancy or same, some of the conditions, would that be another one? Or should we just readdress this at a future meeting?
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
I'd like to just make a proposal if I could.
Go ahead.
It seems as though there's many issues that here that haven't been really addressed, in my opinion. One is the capacity and the occupancy of the building and the required number of parking spaces. And I'm going to cite in our factors that we as a commission are to consider when we're making a decision, items one, two, and five, I don't think have been sufficiently addressed by Mr. Peña. As admirable as his participation in the community is, there's still concerns here regarding this particular proposal. I do believe that these matters should be worked out, and they should be brought back at a future date. So if it's okay with the commission, other commissioners, I would like to move that they, this case be continued and brought back in two months to the July 10th, 2025 meeting of the commission for further consideration, and hopefully some of these issues can be worked out, since Mr. Peña seems to be willing to be, work with the commission, if that's something that we can propose. That's my motion.
Before, before we second, can I ask for a reminder of what items one, two, and five you're referring to?
Item one is that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the conditional use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, comfort, or general welfare. Number two is that the conditional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. And number five, that adequate measure has been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. Doesn't specifically say parking, but that's kind of what I'm thinking.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Higgs seconds that. Any discussion? City, is that agreeable with you?
That's agreeable on our end, yes.
Yeah, and I would like to say one thing. I appreciate everything you've done for the community. It's just, I don't think that site is good for a banquet hall. That's my own personal belief. I live very close to that area, and I drive by it all the time. It's highly congested, it's a very busy street. You have very limited access into your property, so if you want to come back here and try and get it approved, at least speaking for myself, you've got to solve the parking problem. 27 spaces is not enough for 200 people. It just simply is not. It may be okay for the ordinance, the new ordinance that we sent out, but, you know, I just see people parking all over the place and crossing the street, and if you have a large meeting or a large banquet, it's going to be a problem. And, you know, we've got to address that some way, shape, or form.
For the record, Commissioner, Commissioner Haines, could you recite that again, exactly what it is, so we know what we're voting on?
I'm making a motion that we extend or continue this hearing regarding this request for a conditional use permit, zoning calendar item number 2782, conditional use permit for the operation of a banquet hall at 1428 West Glen Flora Avenue, that we continue this to the next two months down to the July 10th meeting at 7:00 PM, and allow Mr. Peña to work with staff to work out some of these issues.
Commissioners, any questions? Could I ask for a roll call bolt?
Young?
Yes.
Haines?
Yes.
Grimes? How?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes. So this is case is carried forward right now. Good luck, and thank you all for coming here and looking at that, and best wishes. Let's move on to our third case, which will be item C, which is zoning calendar 2783. This is a variance for a garage setback requirements to allow a garage in front of the front line of the house at 4386 West Forest Avenue.
Yes, good evening, commissioners. Sam Green with the Planning and Zoning Department here. I've got two zoning calendars for you, but they're near identical projects on two different homes, so I'm just going to present them together for efficiency. So yes, as Chairman stated, this is zoning calendars 2783 and 84 for 4386 West Forest Avenue and 4390. Levy Yosef is the current owner of the properties. He's developing these properties into single-family homes out in the ninth ward. He'll be doing single-unit dwellings out there. There's a little bit of a perspective for you, that yellow star is where they are in relation to the city as a whole, and those two red squares are the two lots that we're talking about today, right off of Belvedere Road, kind of near Oak Plain. So the reason this variance is coming in is for design guidelines. And here at the City of Waukegan, we don't have an appearance review commission or a design committee or anything like that. A lot of cities around Illinois, you have to bring a new home or a new building to these design committees, and they review it from an aesthetic point of view. They say, yes, we like the design, or no, go back to the drawing board. We do not have that at the City of Waukegan. Instead, we opted for codified design guidelines. Specifically, we look at the materials, the transparency, articulation, anti-monotony, making sure that all the... making sure that all the houses don't look the same, uh some landscaping things, planting trees. Uh and what this one is here for, which is the garage setback. So we say that in newly built homes, the garage, if it's attached to the house, needs to be at least five feet back from the front line of that house. Now, why do we ask for that? Um it's really to promote uh pedestrian oriented design and access to those houses. It also just brings more prominent architectural features to the front of the house. Uh and a lot of these design guidelines altogether create a better home design and ultimately a higher property value. So as you can see, good design really matters, even for a really modestly designed home. If you implement things about transparency in garages and a little bit of landscaping can really create a much better designed house. It's much more interactive with the street environment, pedestrian environment, and a higher value property. So this developer is building four homes. Um they're all gonna be brand newly built. Uh and two of them, the one to the left and the right uh at the corner and the one in, are applying for this variance today. And the reason that it's only those two is a total snafu with permit application dates. Um essentially, the two houses to the right, they put in for their permits during the zoning ordinance back before July first of twenty twenty four. All four of these houses were designed prior to then, but he only got to submitting for the permits for these two homes after July first, twenty twenty four. Even though all the design work was done, even though, you know, they designed the house under all the old codes, since they only applied for permits after that, we have to hold them to those requirements. I will give the developer credit. He has made a number of changes to those houses and met almost all of the design requirements except for that garage setback variance. Um as you can see, they're, you know, design homes. They meet transparency in materials, things like that. But there was an issue with the garage since they'd have to re-engineer the design of the house and the structure. It would be financially infeasible. Uh we did get one letter of objection from a neighboring house talking about uh their worries about um bringing garages closer to the street, a concern about um parking and congestion on that road if there's less room in the driveway. I do want to point out that um as you can see, kind of in that bottom area, that dash line is the property line uh setback area. So even though the garage is in front of the front elevation, it's still meeting all the setbacks. It's within the buildable area, so we don't need a setback variance for anything. It's just the relation in relation to the facade is the only reason for the variance. Uh the chairman has those letters of objection and he can read them into the record shortly. Uh here are your findings of fact on which you have to make this variance. The applicant, I believe, is here today, but I can answer any questions for staff if you have any.
Um you, I believe I read it somewhere, but I can't find it really quickly right now. How many feet is the house extend uh is the garage extending past the house or how many feet out of code is it?
Yeah, so the requirement is five feet back. At forty three eighty six, it'll be four feet in front, and at forty three ninety, it'll be five feet in front.
And then with that four or five feet, how long is the rest of the from the garage to the sidewalk or the property line where the, what is the length of that driveway?
Can you believe I don't have it memorized?
Sam, Sam.
Twenty five feet. I was gonna say that, I swear.
It's twenty five feet from the front of the garage to the street or to the property line?
From the property line to the front of the.
It's still twenty five feet.
It's probably more since there's a parkway, actually a pretty hefty parkway in that area.
Okay.
So I don't have the exact number of the length of the driveway, but it's at least twenty five feet because that's the property line.
Okay.
What's the setback of the buildings across the street? Any idea?
Oh, God. Ted, you got, I I don't know off the top of my head.
Just asking, just wondering.
They are the same zoning district.
Well, and as an architect, I have to make a general comment. I don't think good design rests on a garage sitting four feet back from the front facade or four feet in front matter. It matters of of what does a building look like. And that looks like a perfectly wonderful house to me. I don't I don't know why anybody would object to having that next to their house.
Yeah, you know, all the design guidelines tend to work together. Uh the garage one is something we're, you know, just trying to bring something like, you know, you can see. Sorry, at the quote well-designed home, you know, we just try to move the garage away from being like the prominent front feature.
No, I get it. I get it.
Requiring that five foot setback, that just helps bring things a little bit forward.
Any other uh questions, commissioners for the city?
Thanks, sir.
Uh could we get the presenters uh to come up? Please sign in and then we'll swear you in. What's your name, sir?
Uh Tom Budzik.
And what's your relation to the project?
I'm the architect on the project.
Okay. Uh do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Um I I think staff did an excellent job articulating the uniqueness of this case. Um uh Levy came to us actually back in twenty three with this project. Um we actually began the engineering back in twenty three uh and even had a submittal showing the approximate footprints for these homes back in twenty four when we did uh some other engineering work related to the development. So this was always envisioned as for unique properties, uh for unique home designs. Um Levy has taken additional efforts to change the designs after whatever he can at this point to uh meet the requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance, um except for this one item. The the real challenge here is um as he submitted plans for the first two projects, uh he got the trust drawings for those first two homes as required by the city. Um and subsequently, being proactive, got the trust drawings for the next two homes. So it's not only the engineering and architectural uh and the design fees related to this, but it's actual trusses that have already been fabricated uh for these homes. So that's that's kind of the real hardship here. Um with that, happy to answer any questions that the board has.
I do have an objection that I should read.
Good luck.
Yes. This is from John and Karen Shiners. Uh they live at forty three seventy nine West Forest Avenue. They uh this is an objection to the uh uh variance. We strongly object object to the proposed uh zoning change requesting a variance from the garage setback requirements. We think moving the garage closer to the road and having less length for the driveway will encourage parking on our streets. This will create a negative uh traffic situation. We also think our interests would be better served by keeping the garage setbacks at as it exists. Looking forward, there will likely be another request for the two other for uh variances for lots forty three eighty two and forty three seventy eight West Forest Avenue. These two homes will be directly impacted by our home by being unreasonably close to our home. Any comments on that?
Uh I think as staff has already pointed out, we we still meet the front setback requirement of twenty five feet. Uh to the actual street, it appears it's closer to perhaps thirty five feet. Um so we're not actually requesting that the home be closer than what's allowed. Um and I would also point out that the other two homes were, again, per the zoning ordinance and not um per these requirements.
In this case here, we have uh item uh C and uh D, let's see, it'd be C, D. C and D uh basically for the same parcel of land uh with the four homes on it. Uh so we will vote on those individually, uh but there was another uh uh objection to it on the second home too. So we have two from there. So um I think uh I am looking for a motion uh to ex. The variance are the uh objection is the same as I just spoke of for uh the uh zoning uh calendar twenty seven eighty four and twenty seven eighty three. Dialogue. It's from the same persons, yes. So like I said, uh we'll vote on these individually because they stand alone. And um but everything has been common to their location and everything else and the owners and the developers. Uh so I need a motion to deny or accept uh variance uh number twenty. Yes, sir. Oh, yes. Please come up, sir. Yep. Sir, could you state your name?
My my name is Levy Yosef.
Mister Yosef, uh do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Um I surveyed the community. Uh almost nine in ten houses in the community are the same way that we are building these houses. The garage is much more for the front of the building. So what we're doing here is not gonna alter the community. It's not gonna change anything at all. We're not, you know, building a yellow house close to a, you know, community's red houses. So I think we're gonna be okay. We're gonna, this development is gonna enhance the community. It's gonna rate, it's gonna increase the value of the houses and it's gonna prevent from uh invasive trees and shrubs and garbage piling up in the lot. So it's gonna, it's gonna be good for the community. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Was there any uh questions from the commissioners? So what I need to do is entertain um a motion for zoning calendar twenty seven eighty three, which is a variance uh for five foot garage setback requirements for section nine point zero three point C, point one nine, point A, point one of the United Development, U D O, to allow the garage that projects four feet in front of the home. Uh I need a motion for acceptance or denial.
I recommend approval of zoning calendar twenty seven eighty three variance from the garage setback requirements to allow a garage in front of the front line of the house at forty three eighty six West Forest Avenue.
I second it.
Okay, a motion was uh for approval was from Commissioner Higgs and Commissioner, second by Commissioner um Hayes, Haynes, Haynes, excuse me. Um uh roll call, vote please.
Young?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Haug?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes, that this motion uh is approved. Again, this will have to go in front of City Council for final approval. Uh and that date will be June second, third, second, second, oh yeah. And and at around five o'clock, it'll be in this room right here and we'll advise you of what the time is. So you're here on prompt time. Uh moving on to the next one will be zoning uh variance or uh planning calendar twenty seven eighty four. That's also the variance for the garage. Uh and that would be for the five foot setback requirements of what I mentioned before, section nine point zero three, point three, point one nine, point A, point one of the unified development ordinance to allow the garage that projects four feet in front of the home. And this would be for uh forty three, what is it, forty three ninety?
Yep.
Forty three ninety of uh West Forest Avenue. Do I have a motion for acceptance? Or denial?
Do it again. How's that? I recommend approval of zoning calendar twenty seven eighty four variance from the garage setback requirements to allow a garage in front of the front line of the house at forty three ninety West Forest Avenue.
I have a second.
Yeah, a second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Young. Thank you all. Roll call, vote please.
Young?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Haug?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Good luck.
Um is there any um other business that we have as far as any discussions? I would just like to bring up the fact that we do have a. Okay, do I have a motion for adjournment?
They're moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.